Is your volume... Sorry guys. I should have had the kids up here doing this part too. It would have been a lot better.
How are your kids look out here? And I really like how we have a great community.
That it's like sixth grade.
Nine.
We have been in sixth grade so that they're able to be remodels for our number students.
Are APHIBR?
Well, I think there's a lot of things that make APHIBR not only unique but very special. One of the field initiatives called in town that have kindergarten through sixth grade. So that's kind of unique.
Fourteen.
I think what makes ours so unique is that we are a K through sixth school. And within that K through sixth school, we have a lot of different cultures that are representative of the school. And they have the unique opportunity to get to know each other as well learn to work together as a team and be acceptable at school.
Can we run through sixth grade and we have three.
You were great.
What is great about APHIBR? About APHIBR?
I like that we have that.
Go out with everything. And I also think that we have a way of making everything more accessible.
How packed did I grow up in?
That there we get reasons some people don't have it.
I like how kids are being...
What makes this unique is that I want to school there and it was a good school. And I was growing up in school. And I worked very hard for it.
All the kids that come and all the time, year after year, just give her children.
What do you like about APHIBR?
What I like about APHIBR is that we have an amazing community of students and teachers and administrators that are really good at working together and offering new ideas and are excited to jump in and take out.
The general happy environment and the enthusiasm for learning and teaching.
What is great about APHIBR?
I like math.
No, I have a track and some other other different programs.
Are you a center? I like kids playing math.
Great about our school.
Want to report your answer?
You're great.
Could you ever be on the phone? To get more.
For great.
I think it's all the amazing students and teachers. I feel that you'll feel safe and you'll comfortable going through during talking to them about what is happening in their lives or what they're doing.
So I feel like kids can come to school and learn and I feel like they're going to be a teacher and a student.
For students that need extra help with the reading, we focus on reading and comprehension, vocabulary, all kinds of fun stuff. We have a snack to start off, we do gym, so yeah, we make it fun for the kids.
Okay, thank you. What is so unique about our bank?
Well, it's great because we have a bank in our school. When I was growing up, we didn't have a bank in our school. So I think that's very unique. It's very convenient that you can make a deposit at school in your area.
That's great. Like coming in the morning, you can make a deposit.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
And for example, because there's and our students are great and help us make a money. Also help me to each other and we're all willing to help each other to solve problems.
Play.
Do you play?
Um, guys, it's a acting.
Yeah. I like how the students come to talk to us. Always, always APHIBR unique. Because I've been having a conversation with everybody. What happened to that? Apparently APHIBR, the action now has just been real nice.
Oh, it's a great school. We have great teachers, we have great kids. What we need is to be a known school. But also it's unique to have a rich pool of hairlines. It's just like mine.
You like that?
About APHIBR. What is so unique about APHIBR?
This sound was a lot better when we tried it at school, I promise. So I'll post it so you guys can hear it better.
School is great because teachers ask a lot of good questions.
So I apologize. When we tried that at school, the sound worked a whole lot better. But I will post it on Facebook, so if you guys would like to go out and see it. They did a really good job. I'm super proud of these guys. Honestly, the only direction that I gave them was just to go out and interview people about what they loved about APHIBR or what made us unique and what made us special. They did all of the work and then the kids that edited it, they did everything. The only thing that we had to help with was on some of our hashtag, we had a couple spelling errors that we had to help correct. The rest of it was all students back. So I'm super proud of these guys. They did an awesome job.
Board members, any questions for the students or the principal?
Before we leave, I would like to introduce our staff. We have quite a few staff and I'm super proud of these guys too. APHIBR staff, will you guys stand up? Don't be shy, don't be shy. Anna, do you want to start in the back and just introduce yourself and what you do?
Yes. I'm Anna Christina and I'm the school counselor.
Jenny Fulger first grade.
Mary, we can start with you.
Mary Archibauer, newcomers.
Bart Mercer, first grade. Penny Berg, speech language physiologist.
Delaney Gilpin, fifth grade.
Megan Slum, fifth grade.
Kaylin Cruz, fourth.
Melissa Verrett, second grade.
Karen Well, associate principal.
Oriam McInnes, you know.
Karen Well, too.
Sharon, your resource.
Jenny Berstrom, literacy coach.
All right, thank you, Liz.
Well, thank you all for being here. Great presentation. I also liked the way you reviewed not only the interviews that the kids had, but of course you reviewed your team too.
Yeah.
And there was consensus on playground activities and hairlines. I like the amount of interest in math. Do you all have, is there a math game process? Did I glean out of that that gets them excited about it or just plain good teachers?
Guys, what do you think? Math, both?
Both.
I think, I think the iPads, you know, obviously fourth and fifth grade all have their own iPads. And so there's a lot of activities that they've been able to do. There's been a lot of really cool activities that I've seen in the classrooms through that. But, but also the other classrooms that don't have one-to-one, we've got enough that they have an opportunity to use them quite a bit and they do a lot of fun activities on there.
Tim, you have a question?
Not a question, just a request if I might. I was wondering if we could have the parents stand up?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry.
The experience, it's, you know, it warms my heart to see parents involved in their school education. Take your time out to come and watch the presentation. Thank you.
They're a phenomenal group of kids and we have an awesome staff. Super proud of them. And our parents are great. Obviously, the reason the kids are great is because we have great parents.
Any other comments or questions? Dana, anything?
I'll look forward to taking it online tomorrow.
All right.
We hope to have it up tomorrow afternoon on our Facebook page.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yep, guys, come by one more time. If you haven't checked, Portan, come on through. And if you have, but you're going through for a second, please go ahead. All right, kiddos, let's go out the door.
Okay, we'll continue with the board meeting here. Agenda item D, correspondence.
I have a question on that. I know that we received an email with regard to the middle school chair and then a letter was sent to these two of the board members. Will those be included with regard to this meeting or?
We typically provide correspondence here as addressed to the board as a group and deliver on alert. Individual board members, which I think these did. If we become aware of it, we'll share with the rest of the board. That's your pleasure. But I mean, the correspondence side of here is stuff that's addressed to the board.
So I have correspondence there with the... I didn't strip it to you. I got permission from a writer to strip it. The other board members have to strip it.
Good question. Any more questions? Okay. I think we're ready for agenda item E, consent agenda, interchange motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Okay, do I have a consent to that motion? Would that involves consent agenda item E one through E five B? So, is there a second? Laura's second, maybe motion is second. Is there any discussion of consent or motion at all? Okay, Tim?
So, Mr. Chair, just a quick question on agenda item E four, A, B, and C. All three of those bids were rejected. Is there a certain reason they were?
I think after reviewing them, they decided that they wanted to write good specs that actually more defined what they were actually looking for.
Listen, if I could continue that. Was that in part due to the difference between them being a little bit different, you know, when we submitted? Or I mean variability of the...
I think that was part of it. They had such a wide range of things that they were able to look at. And I think it somewhat helped them narrow down the scope of what they wanted. And so to be fair to all bidders, we wanted to be able to put out specs that work towards what we want. And all bidders will have the opportunity to fit on similar vehicles.
And that won't put us behind. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second to prove the consent agenda as printed on a figure of revenue. Or say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, passed. Discussion, I think we're ready for agenda item F, curriculum reports. High school and middle school Avid program.
I'm just going to kick off the introductions a little bit. Avid started in the high school and Jenny may correct me on this, but I believe it was the 2010-2011 school year. So it was still at the Old Garden City High School. And last year, it was implemented in the middle schools, but a little bit of a later start. We got a grant late through, what was it, Penny County? Well, Penny County, and they helped fund part of that and we funded the rest. So it took us a little bit longer to get recruitment and such kicked off at the middle schools last year. But I've got middle school representatives and high school representatives that are going to talk to you a little bit about Avid and what we're seeing in terms of results, school-wide participation, some of the strengths and some of the struggles that we're facing. But overall, a solid program. I've had the opportunity to go to several Avid trainings and the instructional strategies are spot-on. And they are strategies that any teacher in any classroom can utilize to engage students with higher thinking skills, active engagement in lessons, and just solid teaching strategies for any curriculum. So I'll let Jacob go first. He's Kenneth Henderson's Avid teacher.
And while Kenneth is coming up, I might pose a question to you.
Yes. Jacob.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jacob. Megan Park. What does Avid stand for?
So Avid stands for advancement via individual determination. Essentially, that kind of tells you what you need to know in terms of we want to advance these students to post-secondary training. And we, and they have to do so through their own determination. I think the goal of Avid is to give them the skills to do that. The population that we, that we serve are students that are generally considered to be in the academic middle. Students who we feel like have college and post-secondary potential if given the proper support. And that's really what Avid strives to do. And that's why it's been so powerful for the Garden City community because it speaks to a need in our district, I think. So I'll just highlight some of the things that we're doing. I'm the Avid elective instructor at Kenneth Henderson. This is my second year doing that as well as fax education. As Renee mentioned, we were kind of rushed in implementation in 1718. So we finished the year with eight students. This year, we've had some more time to refine our selection process. We got applications out to all seventh graders and coming seventh graders. So that allowed us to select from a pool of roughly 30 applicants. So this year, we have 13 in the Avid elective. And that breaks down into 12 seventh graders and one, and one eighth grader who reminded me that she was in eighth grade when I told her that, "Oh, it's great to have all you seventh graders." No, no, no. So I have one, I have one eighth grader. And as Renee also mentioned, the Avid elective is based on five areas that the lessons draw from and that we use the acronym WICER. Those are writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. In the elective, in the first semester in middle school implementation, we focus on organization in the form of agendas, planners, and a binder, which I'm sure the high school will talk a little more about perhaps. But the binder is a key aspect to it. Organizing their, all of their school materials into one place. In terms of introducing Avid to the school at large, we have undertaken this year a college banner project, which I've done an example here. Dustin Augrum was nice enough to loan us, loan me his example. Something they've done at the high school for a number of years with great success. Essentially, Avid students interviewed KH teachers as to their educational backgrounds. And we are teaming with the yearbook staff to make those banners that would be hung outside of each of the doors of the classrooms. And it is our hope that this will lead to what is called a college attending culture within the school and spark conversations, not only with Avid students, but with, with students throughout the school as to the importance of college, what college experience might be like, to begin to have those, have those conversations. And that's our focus for the first semester. The second semester focus will be in terms of introducing Avid again to the school at large will be some professional development, I'm focused note-taking, which is something that we do a lot of in the Avid elective. And I feel like all content areas can benefit from that. And like Renee had mentioned, these are essentially breakdown to educational best practice in a lot of cases and have a really strong foundation. And we have seen exceptional buy-in from this group in the second semester. So we're really excited to see it grow and move forward. Thank you for having me.
Thanks for being here. Maybe we'll hear from the high school and then maybe field some questions.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Sawyer from Horace Good. Could you use their Avid elective?
Jacob did a good job describing what we do at the middle school level for us. So our numbers wise, we had, we served about 27 kids in the two years we've had it. This year, we have about, we have an equal amount of seventh and eighth graders in the program. We've got six seventh graders and seven eighth graders. So five of those eighth graders are ones I had last year. So we did have quite a few of them that were in the program last year staying in the program. We have two new ones, two of whom chose not to take it again. So we have the same number as we had from that group last year, this year. For recruitment, we included in all our enrollment info this year. We took it on the tours to the intermediate centers and we discussed enrollment stuff there. So that's, information's been made available. I believe we sent information home over this through our Skyward program as well. So we tried to get it out to as many parents as possible. We have not had the numbers to the point where we need to screen applicants or anything like that. Anyone who wants to take Avid at this point, we're allowing to take Avid. Not all of them necessarily. Some of them are kind of above what Avid is searching for in those middle students and things like that. But we felt it was in our best interest to tell, turn them around and stuff like that. So we've taken on all students that were interested in doing Avid. Currently, our future numbers, we look for increases in the future as more awareness gets out there about Avid and what it offers. For our class at Horace Good, we do a lot of, I focus on a lot of interpersonal skills with it as well because as they go forward into college, you're going to have a lot of group work, problem solving. So we do a lot of group problem solving, group activities. They present pretty frequently to the class. Now, granted, they're classes of six and seven, so they're pretty small. But it kind of eases them into kind of being more comfortable presenting to their classmates. And as for the school culture, making it a college-going culture, Miss Shannon Oakley's kind of taken, one of our math teachers kind of spearheaded the movement to get signs out on teachers' doors for the colleges they've attended and where they went and what they went for. So where they got their bachelor's, where they got their master's, or some where they got their associate's as well. So we're trying to get, and we, last year, towards the end of the year, we also sent emails to different colleges asking for college banners, posters, that sort of stuff. So students got to practice in writing professional correspondence to a university of their choice. And we just made sure not to repeat the flow of K-State and Kansas's inboxes. So, I don't know. So that's kind of what we've been focusing on in Horace Good.
Thank you for that presentation. If you have anything around for questions here in a moment or two. And then the high school.
Jenny Vance is our high school Avid coordinator. And the Avid teacher is out recruiting for Keith tonight. So she stepped in to do that and brought through students with her.
Technically, I am the district director. Jody is the coordinator. So that breaks me, because my first thing I was going to say is we do have some new staff with Avid at the high school. So we finally have an Avid site coordinator this year, which is awesome. Jody Malik, and she has been in an Avid demonstration school before. She came from liberal and a demonstration school is the highest level you can reach.